Greetings. Could you all stand for the Pledge of Legions?
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation under God, in his hope, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, welcome to the Thursday, August 3rd Harbor Committee Meeting. We have in attendance Hillary Thayer, Herb Sambel, Mary Ann Eddy, Vice Chair John Parker. We have Council Elizabeth Vale, our producer. She just wanted to admit it, does she? Doris Alvarez. I think there are a few other people that will be on their, that are on their way. So, the first item, motion to approve the minutes will be tabled until 7 September, our next meeting, due to some technical issues. So we are not going to read the minutes. Do we have any comments or questions? Yeah. Or do I need a motion for that?
Second.
Okay, so noted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so noted. Yeah, thank you. Okay, item two, comments and questions. Is there anybody in the audience electronically or physically? No hands. It. And Brad's not online, he's not in Zoom. Okay. Okay, so I guess we can go right to decisions. Do I need a motion to leave the comments section?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an application for Breakwater Yacht Club at 51 Bay Street. Is there anyone from Breakwater here? Excellent. So this is for a wetlands permit. To chapter 285 of the Sag Harbor Village Code for the installation of a six by 70 foot floating dock and an eight by 40 foot floating finger dock, which will become an extension of the Sag Harbor Village dinghy dock into Sag Harbor Bay. It's noted that no upland improvements are proposed at this time. So, we've discussed this.
Looks up the traffic and inability to park excuses.
Crazy. Do we have a copy of the decision? Yeah, to ask, I think that what Doris is doing. Brad, do you want to give a synopsis of the decision?
So Doris, you see that you now have the plan.
I don't think so. I don't think we did. I did not.
I was thinking, I was the only one who didn't see it.
The term was drafted. We did receive revised and updated information from the applicant. There was still the question of the defense, but it seems as though there were no adjustments and there was no issues with constructing within them. And the plans were in accordance with what was discussed at the last meeting. Hermit wasn't ordered. I'm not quite sure why it didn't fit the same. So, if you just give me one second.
Sure.
I have it all here.
Let me ask the representative of the Breakwater Yacht Club, is this still a matter of, you know, some urgency? In other words, are you still trying to do something this year? Or is it something that's gone over to next year?
It is, we're hoping to do it this year, we're overwhelmed, need space, so the desire is good as possible.
Okay.
Have you received like your Army Corps permit and other permits that you need?
I do not have that.
Yeah, the last time I asked Buddy, he said they hadn't heard from the Army Corps yet. That was four days ago, three days ago.
Okay, so it's properties of the 51 Bay Street Harbor. This is the proposed extension of a dock to provide access for yachts for year-round use. Or at least what we consider permanent floating docks. Installation of a six by 70 foot floating dock to be attached to the northern end of the system. Again, that dock will be installed around. In addition to that, there'll be an installation of an eight foot by 40 foot floating finger dock to be attached to the western side of the seaport and a floating dock. And again, that dock will be installed around. The board found this proposed use to be consistent. It would be LWRP determination to determine that this was a consistent with the coast consistency policies. And this action might be considered a type two action. And the dock plans that are being proposed for approval are prepared for the school school, January 30th, 2023. Lasted by 30th, 2023. And the permit is set to expire two years from the date of issue. So we believe that the plans and the product description are in order and ready for the board to make the decisions today. As our standing forward agreement for the use and the structure has been designed as discussed after July.
John, does anybody have any questions about this applicant?
No.
No.
Mary Ann brings up a good point. You need to get your ducks in a row about Corps of Engineers, et cetera.
I think they're, they've been simultaneously applying for those at the same time. So I think we just make it, you know, our own judgment independently of that.
Right.
You know, and then when the other docs get in line, then we can go forward.
Does the, when, so if we approve this tonight, just as a matter of procedure, does the building department look for Corps of Engineer approvals? Do they know about that even? They do?
Yeah.
So they would look for that on this application?
No.
We could make that explicit in our approval resolution as well.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest that we.
There's a number of other steps they need to go through.
Yes.
Right.
Trust me, a lease agreement amended with the village, the village board trustees has to approve it.
So this is down the pipe, okay?
Office of General Services from New York State Underwater, we also have to approve it. So this is one step in the process.
Yeah, great. Would you recommend that we, assuming that we vote to approve it, that we, could we approve it tonight? Contingent upon those other things, or should we wait?
You can, yeah. You can condition on all those other approvals.
Do we have, is, do we have, just a matter of order? Do we have to take our permit and make it conditional on those other ones? Or are we just straightforward, you know?
You don't harbor.
Right.
So.
Yeah, this is one of several approvals that they'll need. And it may not be dependent on the others, but the project is dependent on all the others.
Okay, so let's keep it clear.
For the record, I was looking for the wetlands application and New York State Department of Environmental Conservation was filed on 2/7/2023. New York State Department of State also filed in February. And US Army Corps of Engineers also filed in February 7.
I probably should have brought this to you. But as part of your, of your, you make note of the applicant must verify that all applicable permits for the proposed improvements have been obtained are valid prior to the performance.
Excellent, okay. That's good.
Well, let's, I would, I would move then that we authorize a decision and draw up the permit, you know, on that, on that basis with that condition.
So for clarification, perhaps I should just read through the conditions, just so the board is clear on the conditions that are associated with permits. At least, most of these are fairly standard, you know, for your permits, but all work shall conform to the plans and conditions outlined herein. Any further modifications to the approved plans requires authorization by the Harvard Committee prior to the modifications being undertaken. Such as non-contractor fine payment material. With the approved plans, the Harvard Committee shall be contacted to discuss and determine the most appropriate method of resolution. The applicant must verify that all applicable permits for the proposed improvements have been obtained and are valid prior to the performance of the work. Proposed floating dock and floating finger dock must be constructed with untreated wood materials. The plans of the village say are proposed. All construction debris shall be gathered during and after construction process and properly disposed of so that it does not make its way into your adjacent waterways. Construction access and stationery shall be on the upland area of the property and temporary staging of materials will be on the upland property. All worker vehicles, equipment, demolition debris and construction materials necessary to complete the approved workshop stage onsite are provided by a Bay, a Bay Street. Acceptance of this approval also allows continual jurisdiction of the Harvard Committee in the future and allows for inspection of the site for the purpose of ensuring that all conditions contained herein are met. Prior to commencement of work, the applicant shall provide a copy of this permit and discuss the conditions of this approval with the site contractor to ensure compliance with conditions contained herein. And then all work permitted as by this weapon permit shall be executed in there that avoids any adverse effects neighboring properties or the adjoining weapons or surface water areas proximate to the subject property. It's understood that the granting of approval does not authorize any activity on trespass over or disturbance to immediately jointly joining neighboring properties without their approval. Acceptance of approval by the property owner specifically acknowledges that the property are an acceptable and complete responsibility for damage for disturbance whatsoever that may be caused to the adjacent property by the execution of any element of the approved work. And those are, again, a standard. We do add conditions for special projects that require additional conditions for those. Provable discussions. So, if you can copy this, we'll email it to you and saw it or and help have the lowest price one.
It seems that we can go ahead though, don't we?
Correct.
It seems like we can go ahead, don't you?
Yeah, so do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve this permit.
Sean has previously made the motion.
That's right.
Oh. Okay. Then I'll second, whatever.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So noted.
Good luck. What is your name, by the way? Jim Post.
Okay. Item four, correspondence requiring action. Applicant request to renew expired chapter 285 wetlands permit issued to Patrick McDonough. Date of issuance, January 7th, 2021. And this is for 62 West Water Street. SCTM memo 3212.3. So. Yeah. Is anybody here for the applicant? Brad, do you have anything to read on this?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's Michael Klein here, I'm the applicant.
Greetings.
Greetings.
Are you looking to read something, Brad?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if the applicant, I think you said before.
Okay.
We usually get the applicant the opportunity.
Yes.
What was that, sir?
I was just saying if there's anything that you wanted to present to the board as part of your request for this renewal.
Uh, yes, I bought the house and they had the permit and then it expired and I just want to get that renewed.
So, the Harvard Committee issued a permit for, just to clarify, this is a permit for the proposed pool, outdoor shower and full patio?
Yes.
So, the Harvard Committee issued this permit January 7th, 2021. Know your permits generally are valid for two years, so this permit did expire in January 2023. However, the project does meet the Setback, the Setback requirements. There is a substantial buffer that's associated with the permit. It does appear to meet the standards of the code. Therefore, MPD does not have an issue with your determination tonight, so long as there is no anticipated change to the plans.
That's a question, is there any of this that's in construction now?
No.
And may I ask why there was a delay?
Well, the house got sold and we're not starting construction until next year.
So are you asking for a two-year extension?
Please, yes.
Actually, can they do that on the, what's the, on the first ask for an extension, is it two years or is it one year?
Be whatever we want.
I think it typically would be one year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's anything.
Just to clarify, are you the new owner of the property? Yes, sir. So, you purchased it when? Uh, I purchased it at the beginning of last summer. Okay, about a year ago then? Yes. Yeah. So the permit was, was valid at the time you purchased it? Yes. Fired after that.
Did you say two years, Doris?
Renewal, so let's see.
You mentioned construction, this, this is the only construction that you're, that you're doing on the house, is that correct? Correct.
Would the board like to know the details of the permit? Do you have a permanent funding?
If you just want to summarize it quickly.
Description of it here, yeah, yeah. There.
I see, okay.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't, it's not.
And you know, it's interesting, your term of the permit issued under 285 is a definite period of not less than one year, no more than three. The expiration date should be clearly stated, so in this case, it's two years. So, it's just, but the code does not limit you to renewing it for just one year.
I think one time we had somebody who was coming for their second renewal and I think we shortened it to one year because we were kind of like, come on, let's get going, you know? Enough's enough, but I think generally we make them two years.
And this house, we discussed about revegetating, there was a buffer that pulled out to one side and then they were going to replace the regosa.
Well, the original permit talks about the additional buffering and all of that, and I'm assuming the applicant is still committed to doing all the conditions of the permit?
Yes.
I think we should just give it to him for two years. Yeah. And the pool is narrower, I don't know if that has any impact on the.
Yeah.
I suggest we make a motion.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion?
Let me discuss the question, so if we, if it's renewed, is it renewed from the date starting when it was expired or is it renewed starting, because it expired like, when, January? 2023, so it's been expired for eight months. So if we.
I think you have to go back to that date.
Back to that date, so then extending it for two years to be like, January 2025.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to extend, renew this. What are we doing, renew the expired permit until January 2025? Subject to all the same conditions as outlined in the original permit.
My second.
So noted, all those in favor?
Aye.
So. Doris, you can proceed with, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck out there.
Good luck, enjoy your house.
Thank you so much.
Item two, 14 Vitali Seeley Avenue. I guess this is kind of a, this is a 30-day continuation memo dated July 10th, 2023, so for the DOC, is that correct?
I saw what we got in the email, I didn't really understand it. Can you, if everybody else understood, that's fine, but maybe somebody could explain to me.
Brad, you're the explainer?
Exactly, this is.
So as part of the review process for improvements in large surface waters in the United States, particularly by New York State, property owners, applicants, or agents, they need to apply to multiple different agencies. As part of that collective review process, some of these agencies refer the matters back to other, other involved agencies. You are an involved agency with the Department of State review, because you have an LWRP. You have an interest in weighing in on whether or not this is consistent in terms of the New York State coastal consistency policies and your own LWRP policies. So, if the Department of State sends these referrals out to you, you know, every, every now and then on these types of projects, usually it's on shoreline improvements, docks, revetments, ball heads, you know?
And is that just for a dock, is that what this is?
This is for a dock.
Right.
This is a dock that I believe this committee approved. Reason, the Harvard Committee issued a permit for this dock. So basically, the Department of State is telling you that they received the same application or they received an application for the same dock. And they're asking you to weigh in on the consistency as part of their referral process. So the memo is just the Harvard Committee telling the Department of State that we have reviewed it and we have, we have also issued a permit that is docked and cannot be consistent with LWRP policies.
This is for one of the new, the two houses that are kind of just under construction there?
I don't know the state of construction of the house, but this is a new dock.
Yeah, I think those houses are pretty far along.
Those are the two houses.
Yeah.
Where they took over the road.
Huge.
Right. Everything that they're asking us, we already reviewed and approved when we issued this permit, right? It's not going any further, broader, wider, higher, taller, fatter, whatever. So all we're doing is just saying, yeah, we did our due diligence and we found it to be in compliance.
We talked about turtles and all of that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So even if you hadn't yet issued a permit, you know, we could still make a determination based upon consistency with your LWRP.
What do, what do we do, what do we need to do here?
So, so the letter is already drafted. And basically, the letter just acknowledges that you received this referral. You understand the project, you understand the policies under which you're reviewing it as the local agency, just chapter 275. And that.
275 or 285?
275 and 25. 275 is the coastal.
Waterways, right.
Assistance to review policies. So, we looked at those policies on your behalf and we found that this project was consistent with the permit that we issued under chapter 285. And we found it to be consistent with the chapter 275 policies as well. And we basically say to them, the committee has therefore determined that it has no objections to the Department of State completing their review of the project. You're not saying that they should approve it or deny it, you're just saying that you have no objections or nothing to add as part of their review, other than the fact that you are. And we just have to copy your permit to this letter.
Our permit has expired.
I don't think so.
It, it says, it's noted that this permit expired on June 3rd, 2023.
Correct.
Has the work already been done?
I do not believe so, they're asking for a Department of State determination. They're asked, they're seeking the permits, the additional permits necessary from the other agencies. So it's very likely that you will be receiving requests for.
For extension.
Yeah, renewals.
I assume there's no one here from, from the applicant? I mean, is this a case where we should, in some case, you know, reach out to them and note that the permit has expired or?
So I.
I mean, I have, I have a little bit of a question about, about sending this in, when you have an expired permit, and so there's no valid permit. I mean, although this does note that there's no, that there's no valid permit essentially, but.
Again, and Liz can help there, but you are not telling the Department of State whether or not they should issue a permit. You're just giving them an understanding of what you know about the project.
Right. Let me see.
You understand the project, you've been referred as part of, part of their referral process and that you have nothing further to add to their review, other than what you've already noted in this letter.
And that the permit has expired.
And it's expired.
The permit is that.
You would, that point will be covered in the letter.
And a copy of the permit is actually included, so you've already given them notice of everything you know. And you will have the opportunity to determine whether or not you want to extend it, renew it, when you.
So this letter, is it going to be copied to the owner as well or just going straight to the Department of State?
I do not believe it has to be copied to the owner, we do not generally do that.
Okay. We should tell them if their permits expire.
Yeah, like hello. Right.
That's something we should talk about, I think we discussed that before.
Yeah.
You know, whether or not the Harvard Committee does want to start, you know, making a policy where it does start sending out reminders when their permits expire, when they receive these.
I don't remember getting one of these inquiries from the Department of State before, my memory's not perfect, but it's, I've been around for like seven or eight years, so.
We just did one a few months ago.
Maybe I was gone, okay, but whatever, okay.
They come in every now and then. Generally, when you do receive, when there is work being done on the waterfront, an applicant is responsible for making an application to the Department of State.
Yes.
Under this necessity, we have an LWRP that is generally understood that there is. Under this possibility, we have an LWRP that is generally understood that there is coastal consistency, consistency reviews on a local level. But it is good practice to send it into the Department of State so the Department of State can do this, refer it back out to these agencies.
But it's also been true, it hasn't it, that we've received applicant, we've had applications where the applicant has received state approval before coming to us. And that's not always worked out, so it shouldn't really well. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, it's very, it's variable as to when these permits come in on these projects. You know, you could get a state permit before you're able to get a Harvard Committee review. Sometimes the completeness part of this, and we do make a very thorough dig into the applications and sometimes it takes a while. The application changes depending on the second, third year. So in that time, it wouldn't be unheard of for a Department of State or a D C or Army Corps permit to be issued. So they, so the applicant can come, you could say they already have. Sometimes they come with not, you know, saying that the applicant.
I think the best way to go forward is to approve this letter, send it to the Department of State with a copy to the applicant, advising them that, you know, heads up, your permit with, you know, Sec Hover Village has expired. We don't want like a stop work order. We don't want to go into that kind of a stuff, right? Let's just be direct and, and give them a heads up. They may, you know, this has gone on for a while. They may be oblivious to that fact.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a motion with that proviso.
I make a motion that we approve this letter to go to the Department of State with a copy to the applicant, perhaps with a note drawing their attention to the fact that their permit has expired. And that they certainly can't go forward without getting that renewed, extended, whatever.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it's been noted and we have to be careful, I guess, about advising people about their permits getting expired because.
I don't want that responsibility.
Yeah, because all of a sudden, somebody says, oh, it expired, and you didn't tell us about it.
Right, exactly.
That's their homework.
Right. This is a little different because we have this whole Department of State thing going on, right?
Okay. Can I ask if there's any business?
Of course, we have, we have the, the twenty-two-long point road and that's.
Officially table that to September.
We received a request to adjourn that.
Right.
And we have to agree or not agree with that.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we talked about this bit last time, as to how many times we're going to adjourn something. And I think we decided that last time it was their second adjournment, so is this now their third adjournment? And do we have some finite number?
Actually, I asked our producer if there was a history and Doris, our producers, gave us the dates. There were many meetings and there were also many adjournments. I would guess there were probably five adjournments.
And how many consecutive ones are we on right now? Is that, that to me is sort of the issue because it's like we think we're going to tee it up and then this seems like at least the third that somebody counts probably better than I do.
I believe they are.
And this is their second, yeah.
And it's also true that there is additional information in the record now that I, I, I think is, you know, I think they would be entitled to some additional.
Yeah, this, this, yeah, the last few adjournments seem to be academic in a certain way, or we didn't know their absolute reason. This adjournment makes a lot of sense because NPV just submitted a document that would require an enormous amount of work to respond to by tonight.
Is that why they're asking for adjournment? Oh, I didn't know that.
I mean, yeah, Mike, my inter-science intimated as.
In his letter, he says he wants time to respond.
I think that's a very legitimate.
Okay.
I would just ask, when did they receive that, the report from NPV?
Two days ago.
Monday or Tuesday.
It was recently, it's not, it wasn't submitted a month ago. That's fine, that's fine, no problem.
I can make a motion.
As long, as long as it's a recent submission of new material, no objection to their.
Yeah, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn this until September seventh.
I'll second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so noted, so. Okay, we can give them.
All in favor, aye.
Okay, we table this until the seventh of September? Yeah. Okay. Am I missing anything else?
No, I think we just have to adjourn this.
Okay. Do I hear? Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I move.
First, I think Board Member Phil mentioned you usually hear from the public, see if there's anyone from the public.
Regarding.
Anything.
Anything, okay.
They had that opportunity in the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Second, to move into executive session, you make a motion while you're in regular session to move into executive session. And then after an executive session, you have to go back and make a motion to go back into regular session and then you.
Adjourn from regular session.
Okay, that might be great. Okay, so do I hear a motion to?
Yeah, when they make the motion, then you stop. Yeah.
So do I hear a motion to exit the current meeting so that we can then go into the executive session?
Yes, discuss litigation.
I move.
Second.
So any, all those in favor?
Okay. Then everyone will be asked to leave the room, except if you want it, you know, it's up to the board, generally speaking, who, who sits in an executive session. Obviously, not members of the press or the public.